Hudson, for Monday, November 10th, 2014, if you would all stand and join in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk's roll call, please.
Council President Morissette?
Here.
District Two Yakub Rad?
Here.
District Three McCormick?
Here.
District Four Weber?
Here.
District Five Hackett?
Here.
District Six Vanslow?
Here.
All right, comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anybody that wants to say anything to the council that is not on the agenda, please come forward to the podium. And state your name and your address for our record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Roy Schoberg. I'm a citizen of the city of Hudson, and I live at 1108 Vine Street. And I come tonight to state very succinctly a concern I have over this council's budget for this next year, and it has to do with the funding of the Joint Library. About one month ago, I hand-delivered a personal letter to this body imploring you to use your influence to cause the trustees of the Joint Library to honor the Joint Library's obligation to its neighbors in 2015 and reimburse them as promised in the Joint Library agreement. When St. Croix County gave its approval for the creation of the Joint Library back in 2002, and this was as researched by corporate counsel for the county, the parties agreed to reimburse our neighbor libraries when residents of the town of Hudson, Town of St. Joseph, and the Village of North Hudson checked out books from our neighboring libraries. Prior to the Joint Library, the county collected the library tax, and it paid for the library used by these same residents. But after the formation of the Joint Library, the county no longer collects the library tax from these residents, so now if the Joint Library doesn't pay our neighboring libraries, they have to provide this service without any reimbursement whatsoever. So basically, there's a lot of folks checking out books from our neighboring libraries, and there's no payment going to those libraries at all. So I urge this council to make room in its budget to cover Hudson's share of the $54,732 shortfall that the library is now hitting its neighboring libraries. In comments filed with the Joint Library, circulation use of our neighboring libraries is going up, while circulation in our own library is going down. As suggested by the Director of the Roberts Library, quote, "When Hudson Library is closed on Mondays, those patrons have to have someplace to go, and they are coming to the surrounding communities, impacting us on programming, services, et cetera." In 2015, the St. Croix County, excuse me, in 2014, St. Croix County appropriated some emergency funds to cover this shortfall. But in 2015, the St. Croix County budget just passed does not include any special emergency allocation to the neighboring libraries. Thus, the neighboring libraries will be suffering actual damages during 2015. For example, River Falls is being shorted by the Joint Library in the amount of $29,438 in 2015. If this was to continue for a number of years, it would quickly approach a quarter million dollars. The county administrator, Pat Thompson, has even stepped in and sent this, all the members of the Joint Library, on October 7th, a letter request asking the Joint Library to honor its initial commitment. But that letter wasn't just addressed to the Joint Library, it was addressed to the municipalities of the Joint Library. So I just ask, let me know what I can do to help resolve this problem, let's do what's right here, and let's honor our commitment as we promised to do when we formed the Joint Library, or if we don't honor that commitment, then let's call this Joint Library a failed experiment, and it's terminated. Thanks for listening, and I'll expect some follow-up this time.
Thanks, Roy.
My name is Jerry Adams. I live at 1520 Hunter Hill Road, and I'm here to represent the Hudson Area Senior Center. Thank you, Acting Mayor, for allowing me to speak here tonight to you and the older persons. It's an honor for me to be here. Our president of the Senior Center is Carol McGonaghey. She did not attempt to drive in from Holton, rather she said, "You handle it." Many of you have likely not ever visited Hudson Area Senior Center. It's located at 1320 Wisconsin Street on the CCH campus, where we pay rent for our facility or our room. Our center is a place for seniors to come, to enjoy spending time with friends and people from throughout the area. A bus is available to bring them, or to take them shopping. We shop, or they can shop two days a week at the stores here in town. We serve meals on the site, and volunteers deliver meals on wheels five days a week. The total number of meals served varies widely from nine to 10,000 per year, rather a high number when you think of just senior citizens. Just under half of the meals are delivered to shut-ins. This past year, would you believe, over 108 volunteers were involved through the year. They're the backbone of our existence. One of our concerns involves the rapid growth of the senior population, not only here, but in our nation. The numbers for all senior services will continue to grow, and we have to be ready. I did not come here to tell you about the wonderful things that take place at the center, but I will touch on it before I leave. But I want to tell you about our needs. We are barely scraping by financially when we should be gearing up for future needs. The present hours are from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that is not adequate. But we can afford, and we cannot afford, to add any hours to that. One example we need is more hours to assist people in grasping the use of a computer, smartphones, or other electronic devices that may be used every day. We, the Board of Directors, realize that the city of Hudson could do more for the seniors of the community, especially when we observe the meeting places of other senior centers in the county. The other eight senior centers are providing funding or an area, or in one of their buildings, for the senior centers, seniors to meet. If you people that govern this fine community can find a way to increase your obligation by covering the rent, which presently is at $500 per month, we would have adequate numbers to support programs and increase our hours of operation. We have other sources of income. A couple of these are from the North Hudson Pepperfest, who allow us to man a booth, women also, where we sell cookies and bars made up by ladies of the community and donated to us. The board and volunteers work very hard for the three days that the Pepperfest is on. We have volunteers from the seniors and from other people that are willing to support us in that way. We also receive a nice grant from the Anderson Window Corporation that allow us to serve meals on Friday. About seven years ago, the state of Wisconsin reduced support and requested that we go to serving meals four days a week. The board acquired this grant to cover all the costs involved. As I said before, the volunteers are the backbone of our existence. Only three of the people that work at the center are paid. We also carry insurance, cost of entertainment, cost of a computer, and these are our major expenses outside of rent. The rent takes up over a third of our budget. Our 10 board members consist of all senior citizens from the greater Hudson area. We meet once a month and are responsible for all expenses and activities. Nonprofits are not easy. Some of you may wonder really what takes place five days a week at this center. We have a nurse who does regular blood pressure testing, a foot clinic that's available twice a month, and you better get your name down early in the month, or you won't get in there. In the summer, we enjoy picnics in and around Hudson, and North Hudson, and at the county park. Speakers also come to keep us informed about insurance, public dangers involving phone calls that attempt to scare us into unlawful dealings. And also, we have people come in to talk regularly about nutrition. Our place is on a regular, on a regular basis, we have the grief group, the VFW, Stone Pines' annual meetings, of which there are two. There's a Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning men's group that meets at 7:00. A women's group that comes in to enjoy Mahjong playing every week. And our place is also used by family gatherings for holidays and other occasions. We are pleased, as a senior center, that it's used in such a wide range of activities for our people. I asked the seniors at lunch a few days ago if anyone wanted to write a note to you people, and two of them responded and sent me their notes. It says, "Mr. Adams, it's a fun place. Look forward to go there. Nice birthday parties that I've gone to, meet people from the community and get some new ideas. Get my spirits up after listening to all the bad news of the day." The man that wrote this is 100 years old, maybe some of you know him, Clay Wagner. The second one. "My reason for coming to the Senior Center is it's fun. New people, different ideas, just a nice getaway for most of us. A nice center to go to. I love the decorations." Thank you for listening to me. I passed out some folders, and I want you to take those with you and take a look at I also want to thank and bring your attention for allowing me to speak here tonight. If you have any questions, please contact me. I know we don't have a time for questions here, but my phone number is in the book. Give me a call if you have anything that I can help with. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Jerry. Marion.
My name is Marion Shaw. I live at 493 Country View Road in the town of Hudson, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I had no intention of talking tonight. Just for reference, I'm speaking as a citizen, but a gentleman came up, Roy Schoberg, and talked about the library, just so that everyone on the council knows. I'm the longest-serving member on the Joint Library Board. Roy referenced the fact that it's a failed experiment, and I'm here to attest to the fact that it is not. The only thing that has failed is the ability to move the facility to a place that the budget couldn't conform to, basically. And so that's the situation we're at. I think as taxpayers, as citizens, and as people in the, that represent the town of Hudson, St. Joe Township, the city of Hudson, we all need to be very happy about the situation with the Joint Library, because what we have done is we have provided the best services for the least amount of taxpayers' dollars per circulation in our entire Indian Head Federation Library system. So the problem with reimbursing libraries is the fact that we provide a service at a very good value to the taxpayer, whereas the other libraries are much more expensive on a circulation cost. And so I think the onus on the county at this point in time is to find a way to help the other libraries that Mr. Schoberg and St. Croix County would like to reimburse, try to get them to be as efficient as the Hudson Joint Library, and then I think we're all winners. So to Mr. Schoberg, this is the second time this has been brought up. Each one of the municipalities has seen it, North Hudson, St. Joe's Township, Town of Hudson, City of Hudson. Each one of them saw it, they recognize it, but the fact of the matter is, is that we're in a building right now that we're trying to constrain our budget to fit into, and we provide one heck of a value to the taxpayer, to the citizen, and to the community. Yeah, we'd like to be open more hours, but the fact of the matter is, is we can't afford it. But it is a value. So let's continue to say, it's not a failed experiment, it's an absolute success. Let's point the finger at the county and say, now go out and try to replicate this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marion.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Jeanette Kuns, 493 Autumn Blaze Trail. Last week, the Star Observer portrayed somewhat of an adversarial relationship between the city council and the school district. I'm here to say I don't see it that way. I appreciate your style, and I'd like to explain. This council allows citizens to freely voice their opinion, even when it differs from your majority. You respectfully weigh the options and understand your oath taken to public service. Contrary to that, the school board chooses some suppression of dissenting voices, and what should be an amicable and collaborative contractual relationship between the city police department and the school board instead becomes malignant due to those conflicting cultures. Let me provide you with examples. And when I provide these examples, I'm not here to throw anyone under the bus, but rather in the spirit of transparency and to provide you with some insight. On October 14th, when Officer Grass came to my house, it was, in fact, at the direction of the superintendent, and suggestions of criminal charges were made if I didn't allow viewing of my phone. In an email dated, for your reference, October 15th, at 1:34 a.m., from Superintendent Bowen Egberton to school board members Johnson and Bell, she states, in quote, "As authorized, he indicated that the district was not interested in pressing charges as long as she cooperated," end quote. This shows that the superintendent assumes authorization to direct your officer to determine whether a meeting is public or private and press charges at will accordingly. The next line in that same email goes on to say, quote, "John searched her phone and found no evidence of any photo which aligned with the story she gave a couple of years ago," end quote. Well, it was a couple of years ago that she had me ruled out of order during an opportunity to speak such as this at a school board meeting, and made me sit down without cause. To me, that email is evidence of targeting. Since October 14th, I have learned that criminal charges could not have been pressed, as no crime had occurred, or could have occurred. Consider why that situation stayed between the police department and the school district? Because the accusations were baseless and procedure was not followed. Officer Grass did not merely convey the school district's complaint, he also advocated for it by researching statutes the next day and emailing the school district that he was trying to find something. For your reference, that email was October 15th at 9:56 a.m. from him to Superintendent, end quote. "The statute I found that I think would fit the incident that happened at the school board meeting was 943.724. I will keep looking to see if there is more, if there is one that is more specific to school pupil records," end quote. Well, that statute, for your reference, discusses stealing computer data or programs, and it also requires that the criminal act would be made willingly and knowingly. So his conclusions subsume that I had knowledge that the administrators are sitting in the audience and publicly displaying this confidential information, yet he never asked if I was aware of this practice. In fact, I had no knowledge that that was a practice, because it's a federal FERPA violation that apparently is enabled by the liaison officer present at those meetings. So you might also want to consider whether by allowing those actions and enforcing them, did that negate the school board meeting by violating open meeting laws? As you know, public meetings that are properly notified have no expectations of privacy. School District Attorney Walzberger then went on to claim that the situation was analogous to me using a telescope to retrieve personal data from someone's living room. That supports the theory that they, in fact, thought the meeting was private. So now is your officer being used to enforce any assumed privacy at a properly notified public meeting, or doesn't that negate the entire aspect of the public, of the public part of it? That's a question for you. I have a couple more questions. So who directed Officer Grass to spend the morning after on October 15th looking for a statute to justify those actions and report to the superintendent, while stating he would continue to look for additional ones? Number two, who told school board President Johnson that that initial police report provided to the superintendent and subsequently emailed to all board members before even becoming official could be a private matter between the school district and the police department? Three, and most importantly, is this contractual relationship one that you are confident will not incur your liability in the future? So these points are the tip of the iceberg. I have additional thoughts for you with respect to the emails I reviewed that were 114, excuse me, pages long, and the relationship between the superintendent, Detective Sergeant Willams, and Chief of Police Johnson. But with respect to the time allotted here, I will return it a future meeting with those concerns. The formation of the committee to consider that contract with the liaison officer and the school district does indicate to me that you want to ensure any ongoing relationship will not prompt unintended consequences of liability. For these reasons, I see you as having, I do not see you as having an adversarial relationship with the school district, but rather being proactive with the responsibility of the contract and the public you serve. So I thank you for that.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Yep.
Any further members of the audience for citizens' comments that are not on the agenda? Going once, twice, three times? No. And for the record, I, as District One representative, do reserve my right to vote on all matters before us tonight. So moving on, we will take discussion, possible action on consent agenda items. Madam Clerk?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of October 20th, 2014, and the special meeting minutes of October 21st, 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $663,768.25. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and approval by the police department, approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period November 11th, 2014, to June 30th, 2016. Additional operator license application information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve one amusement device owner's license to Gary D. Anderson, Twin States Music, and 59 amusement devices at various locations in the city as listed on the application. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk, the Public Utility Commission minutes of October 14th, 2014, and the St. Croix EMS Commission minutes of October 21st, 2014. That is all.
No approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Yakub Rad?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes. Moving on to number five, Plan Commission. Discussion, possible action on conditional use permit at 401 Malloo Drive. Denny.
The Plan Commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow a garage to be constructed in the front yard not to exceed 792 square feet of a one-family residential lot, because there's not available space in the rear yard or side yard of the residence. This is, by conditional use permit, you can have a garage in the front yard, which typically is not allowed, but because it's lakefront property, sometimes the only option's in the front yard. If you get a conditional use permit, you can do that. So they're recommending approval of the conditional use permit to allow a combined total of two detached garages not to exceed 1,320 square feet, as proposed by Laura and Peter Amenda at 401 Malloo Drive, with the condition to propose reconfiguration of the new garage be submitted to Community Development Director for approval. This is explanation of reconfiguration. They basically proposed a 36-by-22-foot garage. They want to reconfigure it because it fits better in the lot than the existing driveway. That new plan is not being submitted, but David Gray and I review garages all the time, so we just ask that you allow us to make that decision once the plans are submitted to us.
I move for approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Is that contingent then on you reviewing the plans?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, discussion, possible action on a certified survey map. Extraterritorial zoning outpost circle commercial development in the southwest quadrant of I-94 at exit four.
Now, this is part of our extraterritorial subdivision review versus a zoning review considerations. This is a four-lot commercial certified survey map, again creating four commercial lots out at the outpost circle. Three of the lots will be abutting outpost circle, public street, and one will be abutting county trunk in on the south side. Again, the town approved the certified survey map with the condition that a hammerhead turnaround be permitted. When the Plan Commission looked at it from the city perspective, they asked that the fire chief look at the issue. We received the configuration today, or rough configuration today. Scott Van Martin, our fire chief, hasn't had a chance to fully review that. We'd just like to make a recommendation of approval of the certified survey maps that Mr. Van Martin approves the hammerhead configuration.
I'll bite. What's a hammerhead?
Hammerhead's a turner, well.
Maybe quickly. I'll just read.
It's a good question.
I'll admit it, I don't know what it is.
It's got a hammer.
Looks like a hammer.
Kind of like a mucklehead.
It's like this.
Like a hammer?
Swirly, I think, as short as a sheep, I guess. In this?
Get away.
I might need a pen that works. In this instance, you'll have a right-of-way, which will end, this is 80 foot wide, typical in city street is 66 feet. In this case, the terminal would come like this. So when you get to the end of it, for snowplows, now, sometimes it also comes like this. Vehicles can come here and turn, okay? Now, the thing with, I mean, the percentage use for a hammerhead like this is going to be much higher for the snowplow vehicle than a fire vehicle, particularly our ladder truck. In the case of the fires, if you have the two commercial lots that'd be on this side of the end of that street, if there's a fire inside of those commercial, typically they would enter into the site, fight the fire, maneuver, and then come out, not necessarily maneuver into the, in the hammerhead. So you already got to see the instance where the hammerhead's used a lot by the fire department, but it would be there for the convenience if necessary.
That sounds good. Hammerhead. I move for approval.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And that was contingent on fire?
Fire Chief Van Martin reviewing the plans.
Okay. See, discussion, possible action on the final development plans for an office, warehouse, and maintenance facility at 2310 O'Neill Road on Bear, Barrow Trucking?
Baroli.
Baroli.
Baroli Trucking proposes to move their corporate headquarters to Hudson, and to be located on Lot 17 in the St. Croix Business Park. Proposed is a 32,000-square-foot facility, which can include their corporate headquarters, warehousing, and a small maintenance facility. The plans have been reviewed and recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. Plan Commission recommends approval of the plans to be required to be amended and forward to city staff for review prior to the consideration of the common council. We're down to one issue with the plans. This morning, I talked to Tom Siffle, our city engineer. The plans were modified, they've been submitted, but they haven't been fully reviewed by the engineers. So I'd be recommending approval. I think we're down to really one engineering issue that needs to be resolved. The second issue is that with the stormwater maintenance area that actually the stormwater be going into before it goes into our regional system, we'll have to have a maintenance agreement. As part of the requirements of Wisconsin- The second issue is that with the stormwater maintenance area that actually the stormwater be going into before it goes into our regional system, we'll have to have a maintenance agreement. As part of the requirements of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, maintenance agreements are required between cities, which basically is a private maintenance of that stormwater area. It's not the public maintenance, but it's a private maintenance that's required. And that has not been prepared. We've done five or six of them for, like, Uline, the new Presbyterian Homes project. There's been a number of these agreements that we've done, so it's not something new to the city. But I would like to recommend approval of the plans contingent on the city engineer giving final approval on the stormwater system.
I move for approval based on the continued to use Denny has stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
What's the access to Tower with heavy trucks?
They will not access Tower directly. When we first developed the business park, there was a verbal agreement in Town of Troy that we would not allow access onto Tower Road. When the plans came in, I mentioned to the developer that it's highly likely that we would not, with maybe one possible exception. That possible exception was is that if we needed a fire access lane there, we'd have a lane that'd be gated so it wouldn't be available for public access. In discussions with Fire Chief Van Martin, we don't think that access is necessary. There's room to access off of O'Neill Road, and there's plenty of room on-site to maneuver our fire suppression vehicles. So there's no access directly to Tower Road proposed.
Okay, how about the use of Tower Road? Is the trucking company right on the end of Tower Road?
As long as they meet weight restrictions, that's okay. So I mean, seasonally, they may not be able to use it in springtime.
Yeah, that road's pretty fragile anyway.
And at some point, it's going to need to be rebuilt to crack.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Denny. Number six, Finance Committee. Discussion, possible action on request from St. Croix EMS for additional staff. It was recommended to the full council that the two staff members Kim is requesting be approved. So we'll, Kim, and then open for discussion.
All righty. So for those of you that aren't aware of kind of how we operate, we have four full-time medics on staff, and then we've got basically 48 casual on-call folks to staff two, potentially three, of our ambulances at any given time. Over the past five, 10 years, it's worked out well that we've been able to keep volunteer or on-call EMTs on the trucks and be able to get them out the door and have no problem doing it because our call volume has been low enough to make it work. 2005, we went ALS, and we were doing just under 1,500 calls, which was workable for people to do that. EMTs were able to still work their full-time job and then come in and be able to be on-call and know that they could get either a good night's sleep before they go back to their job or still be able to work at the same time. We're beyond that. We've moved past that. We're just under 2,000 calls now for the year. We're already up from last year. I just ran the numbers. We're already ahead from last year. What I'm looking to do is approve two full-time EMTs to be able to continue to optimize staffing for us. This will guarantee that we'll have people on the trucks, and we're going to be able to staff those trucks without knowing that someone's going to get called into their other job, and now we have an open shift. Or they just can't do it, or they, you know, we can't guarantee, we're not reliant on them. We do it to a point, but we can't. We're just too busy now. So what I'm recommending is two full-time EMTs to help staff, a medic EMT truck for primary, and then also have a medic EMT truck for backup. We'll still be able to get a third truck out the door if need be. This does raise our budget by $71,000, and the question is how we're going to be able to do it. The unfortunate part about EMS is that we're not a business that can go out and create new, fun, exciting things that people are going to buy, and we can't generate revenue that way. I would love to say that all of my staff are not going to get sick or go on maternity leave, and we never have to worry about that stuff either. But I'm confident that we can move forward with this, and we can make this happen, and it's, that it's in the best interest for the city and the citizens of all the municipalities we serve.
For those of you that were not the Finance Committee, we discussed the fact that they'd be operating in a negative budget and using, what they're proposing is using a cash reserve, part of the cash reserve. We have $400,000 in cash reserve, and they want to use the $71,000 until next year in the next budget cycle. And we would have to increase the per capita between $2.30 and maybe $3, right, Neil? And that's just our part of the share of it, but then we also have to hope that our partners in the EMS Commission, the village and the townships, also agree to that per capita increase.
Well, as I mentioned during the Finance Committee, there aren't, the options are not good. And so what we talked about was taking the option that had the greatest likelihood of working in the long term. And as I understand it, Kim, what you have found is that because of competition from neighboring EMS and ambulance services, that you are losing personnel, and that this is one way to help remedy that problem. Is that true?
Yeah, we can retain. You know, we're showing now that the community and the staff that we are pro-EMT as well, and they're part of the reason that we can operate. So hopefully to retain them and still be able to staff the ambulances and get the trucks out the doors we need to.
Now, Kim, I don't know if you discussed at the Finance Committee what the other options were, but maybe you can briefly tell the council what those were and why this one was chosen.
The other alternative budgets?
Yes.
So the first budget that we had proposed was the same way that we're operating now. Putting five people on a truck, or five people staff daily to put, make sure that two chase vehicles and two ambulances were covered at any given time. We're looking to downsize that now to four to make sure that we can, we're always going to have that first truck. We're always going to have that second truck. The only difficult part with that is, is we're still trying to keep within all the labor requirements, and it's becoming more difficult because we can't get as many staff members to staff that many positions. There's 2,016 hours in any given month that we have to try and staff. In order to do that, we're going to need almost 80 members on our staff just to try and staff that many positions. There's, and finding qualified people, finding the people that want to go through the course, it's a lot of training. And then keeping up with all the training requirements, it's a lot of money that way, too. That was the first option. The second option was the one that's proposed to you right now. The third option is a similar option, minus the full-time portion of the EMTs. So still doing a medic EMT truck with hourly wages for the EMTs, just not offering any full-time positions. I'm not in favor of that one. It obviously was the option that we had to look at, and it was something else that we needed to make sure that we thought of. By doing that, and honestly, I really, it shows, for lack of better words, it shows that we're really not pro-EMT. We're really not here to work for the EMTs. We're pro-medic. We want to work with the medics and make it work for them, but we don't want to try and do anything for the EMTs. Keeping good staff is huge because it's going to benefit us in the long run because they're the ones that we want to train our new people coming on, which is why we went with option two, which is the one that's proposed in front of you right now.
Have we run into a problem with our operational staffing the way you are staffed now?
Yes. At any given time, we could be down one, two EMTs. We could be down a medic.
What's could directly affect the care people are getting?
It'll directly affect how many trucks we can get out the door, which is what the big part is, is to make sure we can get those trucks out the door. If we have to bring in River Falls, or Lakeview, or someone else to do our runs for us, depending on what they charge, they could be getting a higher charge for our citizens now because they get an out-of, a non-local, non-resident fee on top of that, or they're waiting 20 minutes for the next truck to come in, where we can give the citizens the trucks right here in town.
I don't know if, sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't know if you guys were here for finance or not, but I'm just going to repeat what I said at finance. And I know Rich and I are at slight odds, not total odds, on this one. But I think that EMS, when I started five years ago, they were in a deficit. They didn't have a reserve fund. They built it up. They've worked at their budgeting to keep it up. And I think the fact that it was built up shows also the fact that there has been more runs and a lot more going on for EMS. I'm willing to take the risk of having and take the $71,000 out of their budget. However, that risk is also me for warning, and I did forewarn Kim and EMS Commission, I would hope, would understand that they need to get this budgeted for their next year's budget so that we're not continuing to take out of the cash reserve. It needs to be budgeted properly for next year's budget. I don't want to delay it a year. The concept, I mean, Rich can talk about his concept as well. I think it was, it's a good concept. I just feel that if we're going to, we could either tier it, or we can just get it going and get them going and get everything ready and up and running, and they're going to have to figure it out, or we're going to be looking at layoffs, which is we never like to do. We don't, we never have laid off since I've been on council, and I don't want to see that. But if they can't find a way to get it in their budget, we can't keep depleting the reserve either. So that's how I feel. I won't make a motion yet because I don't know if Rich wants to speak on how he feels or not, so I'll wait.
I support the staffing for the EMS. I just want to stagger it so that the total impact of the $71,000 is reduced to around $56,000 or $50,000. And by staggering, I mean add the first full-time employee February 1st and the second full-time employee April 1st. And that reduces the impact on the cash fund. So I support the program. I just want to stagger it.
Are there more, excuse me, are there more runs or operational needs in the winter, or?
I would love to say yes, but it's varied so much lately that summer is almost just as busy as wintertime.
It would seem that operational stability is key to making sure that the budget does function properly. It probably affects revenues and everything else that goes along with that service. So to me, having two people in and getting functional and better than where we currently want to be, I think would be, I think, a better use of the money rather than trying to save a little bit. I guess I'd be more in favor of just, you know, upgrading our current status.
It's kind of like, as I was trying to get to in finance, it was somewhat alluded to, but not really. It's somewhat, not completely like the sewer fund, but somewhat where you make up for it later down the line. You know, three months, you get paid on these bills. So does it rejuvenate the budget right away? No. But if we're not calling out to outside resources for runs, we are making, slowly making that money back as well by having it stay internal. So I know we pose a risk in the future of the depletion, but I have no problem saying next year, hey, you guys didn't meet up till you ended the bargain, and now there's going to be, we might have to face a consequence or figure it out before that happens. So I guess that's why I think I want to put my trust in them, in the EMS Commission, to be able to work it out properly for the following years.
And so the fund will be replenished through, how would that be replenished? Through an increase in their per capita charge? Is that?
Well, that and every.
Or is that going to just cover the budget?
It's more about a run, I mean, we make money on runs. We charge on runs, so we get the money back that way. And like Neil expressed, it could be three, six months out with the billing, but eventually, that's how they, that's how they are able to build this operations budget. We were charging so little five years ago that we weren't making money. We were losing money. We've slowly increased our charging, how we've charged and charged differently, which is how we've been able to build this up, along with proper budgeting in the department as well. Where they're getting their supplies from, how they're getting their supplies, things like that have shifted around in the last few years. That's how that fund has built up.
And we're by no means trying to make a giant profit on this. We're just trying to basically cover all of our costs, too. So I think that should be known as we're not raising costs just to simply raise them and to have extra money sitting around.
I don't think anybody here is suggesting that.
No, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, I want that to be known just to everybody, you know, citizens and people, too, because they do see the rates go up, and I think some do get worried that we're in it to make money, and we're just going out and going to trip anybody we can to make a couple hundred dollars or whatever. But I mean, in all reality, the cost of everything has gone up. All of our medications have gone up, everything, so we have to.
Well, right, $400,000 in five years is not a, it's not a business I'd want to run, I guess.
Did that answer, did she answer your question, or do you want Neil to clarify how that's replenished, if it is?
Yeah, that's what I.
Neil?
How is the fund going to be replenished? Because the per capita charge is going to go against the budget.
It really doesn't over time, but the experts.
It's a long revolving, is what I'm.
Actually, if you're looking at it, you know, the, if, if there was no phase-in, there would be a cash deficit for 2015 in the 70,000-plus range. That will never be replenished.
Okay.
Okay? You know, you will have ongoing cash, you know, cash flow. It varies, you know, dramatically month to month. But, you know, you can pretty well average it out. It's been fairly consistent for the past few years. So, you know, what, you know, I guess, you know, what the concept that was recommended by the commission would be, would be to use their surplus, because they have had a few good years where they have built up a cash surplus, to use that surplus for this year to cover this shortfall, and then next year, look at raising the per capita's so that we would be at a steady state. So really, the 70, you know, the $70,000, you know, cash operating loss, that's just going to deplete their cash balance.
Then the next question is, is there, what's the need for, is there a need that we're anticipating for that cash fund? Is there to?
Is it used capital or operational, or whatever they want?
It's both. You know, I think in the future, you know, if you ask him for, you know, for her out of the, even though it's not, you know, typically part of our five-year capital plan, you know, the five-year capital plan that'll, you know, be up to the, you know, the council next month really looks at what we have to issue debt for. Well, for the future capital needs of the ambulance service or, you know, that department, that should come out of cash flow. You know, for the past two trucks that they've purchased, they really didn't have the cash reserves, so they've borrowed money from the city and is repaying the city. But I think in the future, that's not the ideal situation. In the future, you know, they should be building up a sufficient amount of cash so that they can, you know, recycle their equipment on a regular basis.
Well, and one of the trucks they recently purchased was, it was, it was a very, it was a kind of a quick decision. It came up very quickly, and it was something, it was actually.
The last ambulance?
Yeah, the set of, I don't know if it was the last one or the one before, but.
The demo models?
Yes.
Both of them, the last two have been demo models.
Okay, well, that's not helping my case here. I'm trying to remember which one I'm, which, which one I'm going at where it was going to be less expensive to buy that at that point than it was to fix what we had. There was a.
Well, we still have one.
You're killing me here right now.
Sorry. What do you want me to say?
Josh knows, Josh knows what I'm talking about back there. No, I'm just saying that we.
They've been fiscally responsible.
They've been fiscally, I feel like they, yes, thank you. Replenish was the wrong word I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is that, yes, it gets depleted, but money does, they are able to build money into this account. It's not, it's not a constant depletion where it's never going to, you know.
Replenish itself.
Well, replenish is apparently the wrong word, but everyone gets what I'm trying to say, so I'm just going to not talk anymore.
That's good. I was on the, when I was on the Troy Board, I was part of the EMS Commission, and the bleeding then was just horrible. They're really doing quite well. They're very, very, doing very well managing the money and collecting the money. Just do us so. It's phenomenal what they've done, and I think we need to support this in the best possible way we can. We need to, this is where we need to, we need the best ambulance service we can have.
So then on that note, I'll make a motion to approve the, as requested.
Any further discussion? Rich, have you said your piece? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Under new business, discussion, possible action on application for rezoning part of golf course property from R1, one-family residential district to PRD planned residential district, Hanson Brothers. Hanson Brothers LLC, refer to plan commission, and schedule public hearing on December fifteenth. Denny?
Typical process under a rezoning application is the application comes to the common council. Common council typically, we review it, uh, accept it, forward it to the plan commission for recommendation and also the city staff. Um, the second item is to establish a public hearing date, which is the public hearings is held by the common council. I'm suggesting that the public hearing be scheduled for December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen at six fifty P.M. And the forward, the plan commission's, uh, and the application to the plan commission and city staff for review and recommendation. Now, the only issue there is this public hearing be right before Christmas. I guess, you know, the question is, do you want to try to schedule something in or wait till after first of year? Uh, and there's a side note, Kathy and I discussed today and Rich mentioned it to me this evening, is there are private covenants on this property that has to stay as a golf course. Kathy and I want it fully understood that a consideration of a rezoning does not remove those private covenants from the property. That's a separate issue and Kathy can comment if she wants to. I think we want to make that issue clear so that there's no implied, uh, consideration that city's accepting to review the rezoning application and the private covenants would be necessary be removed.
Danny, how come this is back on our agenda? I thought it was pretty clear that this council made a decision in the past. We were not looking to rezone that to a development.
Well, I don't think I have, I'll issue an opinion. I don't think the common council really has much choice to accept other than to accept, take it through the process. If you want to deny the zoning consideration, you certainly can. But you allow the process to work.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the issue was whether to waive the condition. And that's what the council said they wouldn't do.
Said anything about rezoning, it was just about the condition. So, I guess I'll make a motion to set a public hearing date for December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen at six fifty P.M. Also forward this to plan commission and city staff for review and further recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two noes?
Two noes.
Four? Still passes? Okay, number eight, communication and items for future agendas. Any council members?
I, I just want to, uh, remind everyone that there was a snow event declared, uh, for tonight and, uh.
Two A.M.
At two A.M. To keep your car, please get your cars off the road and, uh, also especially up in District Two. If you want to get those cul-de-sacs plowed efficiently, we need to have those cars off the road. Also, reminder to what the snow, whether, I don't know if it's melted now or if it's going to be slippery, but, or what's the deal is, but to keep the sidewalks, to plow your, shovel your, or plow your sidewalks front and side is a requirement by the homeowner.
Any other members?
I was going to order more snow, but we, we don't have the money for it. I only got one inch.
Communication items for future agenda, city attorney, city staff. I think she stole your thunder.
I'm so sorry for that.
Real briefly to add on to that, just a reminder to citizens that you can sign up for notification on the city's website for anything, but especially for this snow event declaration so that you'll get a text message, an email, whatever you want, so that you're notified about it right away. So, there's no question of whether it's been, basically anytime there's two inches or more, the event will be declared.
It would be, that, it's, that's a really good process. You know, I've signed up for all the notifications and that's great. And we, we need to figure out how to get this out to the public.
We've, we've put it in utility bills. We've put it, you know, but we'll keep trying to promote it. Um, we've had a couple of people that have called and they've had some glitches getting it set up. Just call the city and the IT director is able to get in there and figure out what the issue is. Sometimes, today we had someone that because it blocked the text message because it didn't recognize it. So, sometimes it's as simple as that. Budget hearing is next Monday, seven o'clock. Um, anybody has any questions on the budget prior to them, please let me know. And my virtual forwarded me earlier this evening, there's a scam going around about the IRS targeting the elderly. Kind of interesting that he brought that up tonight. I will put it on the city's webpage, but Al wanted me to rid that up, so. That's it, thank you.
Any further announcements? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.